Okay, good evening Chatham community. We have actually over 103 people connected currently and I see more that are just joining us. So, welcome to our opening of schools virtual town hall meeting. If you would have asked me a year ago when we were doing these that I thought we'd be doing them again this year. I probably would have been reluctant to commit to that thinking that we were going to be well past our challenges with COVID, but that's not the case. And our goal this evening is to try to provide you as much information as we possibly can. There are still some things that are being decided at the levels above where I sit. And hopefully we can give you enough information to feel comfortable with with our start for this year. The format this evening is going to be that I'm going to provide a short presentation. We have the pleasure of having our public health director for Columbia County, which I'll introduce in a minute, join us. After which I've had a chance to give you some basic information that I think is important to you. I'll go into some of the questions, the many questions that we received on our email. And then we'll open it up to the questions and answers that all of you who are attending live may have this evening. I would like to keep this to about an hour. However, I'm not going anywhere until you are satisfied we've answered all your questions. So with that, let me move to my first slide. This meeting is being recorded. For those who were unable to attend this evening, we will place it on our YouTube channel sometime tomorrow. So that parents and other stakeholders can can view it and reference it other live this evening. I do want to thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule to be with us for this important event. And the objective tonight, as I mentioned, was to update you on how we are making out with our opening of school and address questions, both the ones we've received from email and for those questions coming in new tonight. There are places in this presentation that you may see a little symbol that says please and thank you. This is identify identifies locations where you can help us out like you did last year. And again, I can't urge anything except some patience with us and some flexibility again this year. And that will be key for us to be successful as we were last year. Joining us this evening, as I mentioned, Jack Mab, our Columbia County Public Health Director. I should mention that the superintendents in Columbia County, the six school districts and the superintendents have been meeting with Jack on Wednesdays almost from the start, going back almost 18 months. And I can't tell you that how invaluable indispensable and valuable the relationship with the Columbia County Department of Health is. They, as Jack will quote, we do the best we can with what we have. And they've been partners and been right alongside of us in a lot of key decisions that we are not as school officials as qualified to make as our public health officials are. Also, behind the scenes, or actually not so behind the scenes on our panel tonight, we have Dr. Lisa Root, our Director of Academics and Educational Services, Mike Schrady, our Chief Financial Officer, Brian Simon, we have our principals, Kristin, Mike, and currently Justin from the high school joining us. Our school nurses are dialed in. And of course, thank you to Kate Gerard, who's helping us like she did last year, assisting us with monitoring and organizing the questions that you may have in this forum. A few things that I wanted to take advantage of real quick before we go on to other things related to COVID, since I have the community together. And now I have almost 125 participants. Tomorrow evening, we do have a public board meeting. The meeting will take place live in the library at the high school, but will also will also be streamed like we have in the past. I'm going to be making a recommendation to the Board of Education to create a new co-principal structure. John Thorson and Mike Burns will be named co-principals, or my recommendation is to name them as co-principals. And they will have individual focuses on various aspects of the district. We feel this is going to be a nice move forward to have those individuals focus intensely on instruction and other school-related items in an effort to be bring more consistency to our grade 12 grade six through 12 program. And of course, they'll work in consultation with Ms. Reno and Mr. Fortran at the elementary school to ultimately see a more more continuity between our entire K pre-K 12 program. Our assistant principals, who you know and love, Justin, Mike, and Brett will remain in their respective buildings and provide daily operational support and inconsistency at the building level. Another real quick thing, you we've had a soft rollout of our new website. We're still working through some of the navigation and some of the items with the new website. But I want at least you to for you to at least know that we have a new website. And more importantly, we are soon within the next week or two going to launch something we're very excited about, which is a custom app. An app that you can download from the Apple and Android, Apple Store, Android Google Play, which will provide you an opportunity to have a lot of the information that you come to need from the district in one location on your phone. So kind of a shameless plug while I have you to share those with you. Also, just our pre-K kindergarten orientation is coming up next Tuesday. If this pertains to you, that will be from three to four o'clock. Those of you who this is relative for receive communication, but I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. And then finally, all communication and information related to COVID, just like it like we did last year, can be found on our website. But you know, on our new website, we've established a quick link in the upper right-hand corner. So anything from any of the documents I'm about to talk about tonight to a link to the recording from tonight's webinar and anything that we receive from the different various agencies can be found on the website. So tonight's presentation will include, as I mentioned, our focus this year is on in-person learning. As we we are prepared to make temporary shifts to remote instruction should the situation require us to do so. And I wanted to just mention that all of tonight's information and our plan was created in accordance with the recommendations and guidance from the New York State Education Department and the American Academy of Pediatrics, as well as most recently, the New York State Department of Health and certainly the CDC. We're going to talk a little bit about health and safety, facilities and daily health screenings, child nutrition, our transportation, social emotional well-being, and then give you a little bit more on logistics. I'm there we go, I kind of have these in reverse order. But I would now like to introduce Jack Mab, our Director of Columbia County Department of Health. Maybe, Jack, you could give us a quick overview on your vantage point of the state of the county and comments and concerns you might have on student safety. And before you do that, I was bringing up kind of in reverse order here, some tools that are available online. There's the CDC COVID data tracker, which we use with in conjunction with the health department to take a look at where we are. And then, of course, the statistics that are behind that website in terms of the county. So, Jack, if you don't mind making a few introductory comments.
Well, good evening and thanks for having me. Glad to be here. You brought up the CDC tracker, so we'll start with there. You noticed the most of the state is in red, which is the high the high incidence rate. Columbia County, we enjoyed about 10 days ago, we were in the substantial. And a little bit before that, we were in moderate, but here we are. Also on that tracker, 77.3%, I think today, of Columbia County residents over 18 have been have received at least one shot. 75.3% of individuals over 12 have received at least one shot. To me, the math tells me that 60%, something like 60% of the students who are eligible to get that that shot have have gotten at least one shot. And I congratulate them on doing that. That's a that's a great rate for us. It keeps creeping up every day. You notice on the tracker, it said 71 positive cases. That was last week. By comparison, in the month of June, we had 23 positives. In the month of July, we had 67 positives. Last week alone, we had 71 positives. We, for the first time, because of the large number of positives, we're back to working weekends. We had seven on Saturday, we had 15 today. So this continues. You see the positivity rate there of 2.92%. That's a little bit better than the capital region. So we're doing all right, but I think this is a delta. It's here to stay. It's it's very contagious. What we're finding a lot is compared to when our numbers were high back in January, that we could have a positive individual in the house and the rest of the household would stay negative. What we're seeing now is that the whole household is affected and we're we're doing a lot of testing of households. So I think that it's is a little ominous that we're starting the school year with numbers these high and this high and with a Delta variant out there. I'm optimistic, cautiously optimistic. I think that as Superintendent Angela indicated, we've been working with the local school districts and all of them have very thoughtful plans, well thought out, and and we're going to do the best we can with what we've got. We're going to launch and we're going to make adjustments as we go and and we're going to work together to do that.
Jack, thank you. If you don't mind, and I know I'm catching you a little off guard, but I'm thinking ahead in terms of some questions I've received this week and trying to answer the best to the extent I could. But while I have you, in terms of the vaccine currently, it is only authorized, fully authorized for 16-plus-year-old students, correct? And I know you don't have a crystal ball, but in terms of 12 plus or even greater, any any sense from your health community as to where you might be in terms of full authorization on any other age groups?
Well, I think the Moderna is around the corner on full authorization. And I think that I believe that we'll see the five to 11-year-olds by Thanksgiving.
And while like one last question in regard to several people have asked in terms of the booster. I know that's not going to be available till later in September, perhaps early October. Can you just give me a little information in terms of, I know you've begun to talk about strategies on on how you would get the word out and would that be available through the county? Or will, do you have any sense for whether there'll be distribution through other other means like pharmacies and mass vaccination sites?
Well, at this point in time, we are here at our clinic administering what they call third shots. So there's there's third shots and then there's boosters, which are two different things. We're administering third shots to individuals who are immunocompromised. They have to fit into one of the categories pretty severely immunocompromised. And we work with people on that. And so if anybody feels that they fit into that category, they certainly should call the health department. And we are, we are giving those shots here at our clinics now. The official rollout is supposed to happen September 20th on boosters. We're supposed to start with those individuals who got it back in December and January. And if you recall then, those were healthcare workers, EMS and fire and well, actually, police were first on that. We're going to roll that out because of the time of the year. Some of a, some folks were able to get to the college when we were doing our our shots over there during the during the winter months and then in the spring, because of the time of year, we're going to be doing drive-ups. We're working on the old ShopRite parking lot. I think it's going to happen there as well as the Chatham fairgrounds. We have tentatively scheduled a a pod, a drive-up pod for those booster shots for September 23rd. We are also planning and we've taken a look at the chat. We took a look at going to the Chatham Fair and giving out first doses. We looked at others, some of the communities around us that already had local fairs. Albany County invested a tremendous amount of resources into being at the Altamont Fair and they gave out 26 shots over five days. We've decided that we're actually going to have a a pod at the Chatham Fairhouse, the wooden, big wooden building in the middle of fairgrounds on September 15th. That will be for first and first doses. So if anybody is interested, certainly students who haven't gotten a shot yet and want to get it, we can do that. We will be doing shots for immunocompromised people as well on that on that at that pod, S4 to 7. And actually, the the link for that is already open on our website, so people can sign up for it if they so choose to do that. But the first, the first pod for the boosters is September 23rd.
Thank you, Jack. And later in the presentation, I think I provide the link. You can always go to the New York State DOH website to the vaccine. There's a location where you can look up where vaccines are available. So if one of the things that Jack mentioned, one of the sites or times is not convenient, you can seek out information on that website. Jack, thank you. I'm going to move back to some information that I think our parents and stakeholders would find helpful today. Just as a reminder, the first day for staff will be Tuesday, September 7th, a week from tomorrow. And students report back to us on September 9th, next Thursday. As I previously mentioned, all students will be back full-time in person this year. That is our goal. We have put, as you'll hear, multiple mitigation strategies in place to the best extent possible. Try to keep everybody healthy and everybody learning in person. We have no fully remote option per se. There were several students in the district who have been identified as medically compromised. They went through a process to supply documentation and we are making some alternate arrangements for them. But we do not have, like we did last year, any full remote option for students. You're hearing a lot about physical distancing and the changes that have been put in place for this year. And again, everything that I'm about to review with you this evening is subject to potentially changing if our new governor comes out with some additional guidelines or the Department of Health under her insistence, if you will, come out with new guidelines, we'll certainly make sure they're communicated with you. But as it stands, right now, we're going with the premise that students will be physically distanced three foot from each other indoors. And and then if the activity involves eating band and other activities where there is a increased chance to to make airborne particles, then that distance is six foot. But that's currently under under discussion as well. You're going to see later on that we do have some new vast policies in place. But when it comes to music, we also are putting in some other mitigation strategies. I wanted to mention a little bit about transportation. One of the key factors in our ability to bring back everyone in person was some flexibility that we now have with transportation. Last year, our parents were helpful in helping us be partners in transporting some of their students. We would not have been able to have managed to bring those students who chose to come back last year into the building without that assistance. This year, we are going to be able to bring our buses to capacity in regard to two students per seat with multiple mitigation strategies in place. And those are that students must wear a properly fitting mask on the bus at all times. When appropriate, we will have windows open and ventilation on the bus. And we will continue to clean and disinfect each bus on a nightly basis, including using a product that helps cut down on the ability for the virus to attach to surfaces, which we did last year and we felt was very effective. So that's in terms of of transportation. One other question that I got within the last week, and I'm going to try to incorporate a few responses within the presentation is we, prior to COVID, we were able to traditionally provide alternative transportation requests. Remember, we are, we are required to provide student pupil transportation to and from the the home of eligible students. But also those eligible students have had the flexibility for us to take them, pick them up and take them to alternative daycare sites in the past. We we are not able to do that to the extent that we have in the past. There is a full process in place for parents to make that request and we've approved as many requests as possible. But what I really wanted to do is just assure parents that as we establish ridership at the beginning of the school year, we certainly need to give priority to those students who are eligible on their own home route. But once we know what that, we have established that ridership and we know what the capacity of our buses are, we will take a look at the few additional alternate requests that we were not able to to approve. And if we can, we want to be, you know, we want to be able to be, we want to be able to assist our parents to this extent possible. So please know that we will continue to monitor those. I've mentioned some multiple mitigation strategies. One of the things, one of the bigger changes this year that has come about and maybe, Jack, if you don't mind, I'll go back to you for a second. But a lot of discussion had taken place this summer in terms of the daily health checks, the emails that parents received and were required to complete before their child came to school. And in addition to the temperature checks that were done as a follow-up at school. We did not, as a group, and I'll say universally, we decided that they really didn't yield anything meaningful. There were not any great examples, maybe a one or two in the entire county where that yielded additional information where it prevented a potential exposure. Jack and I, okay with that? Do you have any comments in terms of our discussion related to not giving up precious instructional time to to go through that process?
Yeah, we, again, we did discuss this as a group with the superintendents. And if it's not yielding useful data, if it's not, it's not sending too many kids home and whatever. I think the most powerful thing here is the parents, starting the day, if the child is sick, is not feeling well, they shouldn't come to school. And that really is the most powerful thing that can be done at home.
Thank you for that segue. You know, Jack brings up a good point. Regardless of whether you're checking a box on a daily form or not, the bottom line is if your child is ill, running a fever, obviously, or having any of the COVID-related symptoms, the best course of action is to keep them home so that they can be properly evaluated and not and not run the risk of exposing them to other students. So we, we are really relying on our parents to, in a lot of ways, provide a good faith effort to to keep their children home when they're when they're ill. I did mention we are, we are still promoting healthy hygiene practices with our students at all grade levels. There's no substitution for making sure that we're still washing hands and and we'll continue to reinforce those great hygiene habits with our students, particularly our younger students as they return to us in the fall. And we ask that you, as parents, help us with that by making sure they're doing those hygiene practices at home and following those practices at home. Already mentioned that the social distancing standard for this school year will be three foot. And here's, you know, our, what we're just talking about, management of ill persons. If if a student does become ill at school, just as we did last year here, the nurse will be notified, the student will come down to the isolation rooms. Those are still in existence, existed for the existence for this year. If you are called to ask and ask to pick up your child, we do ask that you try to make an attempt to get the child 30, 45 minutes to help us out as well. One of the things that it's a little bit later in the presentation, and maybe this is one of the other things that I'll ask Jack to talk about is we have Jack for a limited amount of time tonight. The Columbia County, as many counties in the region, have applied for and have tenet approval for the ELC grant, if I have the right acronym there. That grant is potentially going to allow us to do some surveillance testing. And once the grant is and the equipment's available, the thought is that we might have an increased capacity to do some point of care testing. So if a child were to be ill in school, they would, the nurses would have available to them a molecular PCR, rapid PCR test so that we could eliminate whether that symptom that the students coming down the isolation room for is indeed COVID and needs to be dealt with in one way, or it's it's something else. And we can do a differentiated kind of diagnosis on that. So more to come. Jack, I don't know if you want to mention a little bit to do with that grant. I know we we're not quite, quite there yet.
Yeah, we're not there yet. We, we do have a contract signed and into the state of New York, we have a work plan that accompanied the contract. So we're assuming that that has been approved. That does include buying the binex machines for the schools so that they can do the point of care testing and, but it also includes money for surveillance testing, which is, this money comes out of the CDC. The CDC is a, is a research group. They want to surveil classrooms and see schools and see how the frequency of which of the of the COVID in the class and in the schools. And so BOSI's is going to be doing that. We're going to be working with them on that. But I do think as a, as a parent and a, as a grandparent of kids in the Hudson School District, and I have one in the Aprilby Crane School as well, being able to test a child that comes in sick to the nurse could be a real game changer for the school. So we were very frustrated last year when we got the phone call like everybody else. Hey, your, your, your child is here with a, with a headache and you need to come pick him up and you can't come back for 10 days without a test. So we're hoping to change that. And I think that this grant can.
Awesome. Also, on behalf of our school nurses, just a reminder that during the first few weeks of school, parents should email the school nurse to set up an appointment to drop off medications. And also, just like last year, if your child is ill at school with COVID symptoms, we are going to, as a precaution, send all siblings home, just as we did last year. And I'm just looking at some questions in the, in the chat here. If your child is home, parents should keep siblings home as well, just as a precaution, until you can eliminate COVID as a possibility. Let's talk a little bit about a very controversial issue. I am thankful that our new governor has come out and at least created a consistent policy for all of us in in K-12, PK-12 to to use. So in, for no uncertain terms, effective last Friday, it says effective immediately, this communication came out on the 27th of August in accordance with the commissioner's determination, and I'm not going to insult your intelligence to read it. But in no uncertain terms, everyone must wear a mask at all times indoors, regardless of vaccination status. And so that is the protocol that we will be following. That's what the protocol we kind of followed in the spring. We deviated a little bit in summer from that, but for the most part, there's no room for interpretation here. Masks need to be worn indoors by everyone. Outdoors is a different story. Right now, we're not requiring mask use outdoors. It is prudent, though, in in areas of a high congregation of individuals that, you know, masks are always a good preventative measure. But right now, masks will not be used outdoors. Jack, I know your time with us is kind of short. Did you want to mention anything about masks or while I have you? Or is that enough said?
Well, almost enough said. I just, I think that if you look at the regulations, they say a properly worn mask. And that's the only thing that I would say is that a mask that's underneath the nose is not properly worn. I would strongly encourage, especially on the bus, kids that are taking the bus, you know, parents really encourage their kids to wear the mask properly. That's a scary place for me because of the proximity and the length of time that kids are on the bus. But I think that the only thing I would say is that it needs to be, you know, properly, properly worn.
Great. This next slide really is a slide that I'm sharing with you from the CDC. The New York State Toolkit has not been refreshed for this year, but this is the flow chart that we will use when a student shows signs of an infection with COVID. I've explained to you that a nurse will call you and the student will then have to go to a medical provider and and be tested. The quarantine period for COVID is 10 days. And Jack, I think I'm correct in saying that in our county, we are not recognizing the CDC recommendation to test out early from a COVID, from a quarantine situation. So if a student is positive, then they would have to serve the entire 10-day quarantine period. I should mention at this point that Jack has a number of nurses that work with and close to him, including a school specialist. Our nurses, that is our kind of our nurses liaison to the department. And when we do have a positive case and we're notified, either we're notifying them or they're notifying us, we work very intimately with those individuals to make sure that we are providing the proper contact tracing that is necessary and requiring quarantining the proper number, appropriate number of people giving, given the exposure. Earlier, Jack mentioned that 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 graph and we are in the high transmission zone. For those of you who aren't familiar, there are four categories. There's low, moderate, substantial, and high. This has recently come into importance, particularly with our athletics program. We are in high transmission. And right now, in collaboration with decisions made at the Columbia County Department of Health and amongst the Columbia County superintendents, we are currently testing high-risk athletes, so those who are participating in football, volleyball, and cheer twice a week. And we are testing all other athletes. And we are testing all other athletes once a week. Mentioned a little bit about contact tracing. We're kind of at a half an hour. I'm going to move forward just a little bit. I did want to mention, I hope that it would be ready for today. It is intentionally blurred out because it's not ready for public distribution. But the Jack and his counterparts in the Greater Capital Region area have worked exhaustively on. On some contact tracing. Flow charts and with that, within the next few days, we expect that it'll be available to us for distribution. But they did a tremendous job in trying to graphically illustrate all the different scenarios that we might encounter in schools. Whether it's a student-on-student case, whether it's a case. On a bus, whether it's a case in the lunchroom, and they've gone and. Graphically represented the, the most common scenarios that we may have to deal with and take us through. A very logical decision-making process. The one thing that I can. The one thing I can mention about that, whoops, sorry about that, my little mouse here. Is that there has been some confusion over vaccinated versus unvaccinated people. It is true that in most of these scenarios, and Jack, correct me if I'm wrong, because I know it's changes, that vaccinated. Individuals who are asymptomatic in general do not have to quarantine. Am I correct on that, Jack?
That, that has been the case, and I think that that's, I would remiss not to put in a plug for getting vaccinated. Because the, this algorithm does, it's a different track if you're vaccinated and it is. It's, it keeps, it's going to keep vaccinated kids in school more, more than unvaccinated kids.
Of course, if an individual, whether they're vaccinated or not, we all have heard about breakthrough cases, those who've been vaccinated but still. You know. Contracted virus and are symptomatic. In all cases, if someone is symptomatic, then the game changes. But if you are. Vaccinated and you are asymptomatic, there is a recommendation that, that the CDC has out there that after. An exposure, you do test and, but that is a recommendation. But for the most part, if you are vaccinated. You will not have to quarantine. I got, I got quite a few questions in the chat or in the email. Regarding school closure. And, you know, this is, while I had Jack for the last few minutes, we do not take school closures lightly. I often ask what will be the determination? Well, first of all, you know, we, we know a lot more than we did a year ago. And nobody wants to disrupt the educational process. Without, you know, serious consideration. So if we have a situation where we have a few, a positive case or. We need to quarantine students within a particular classroom, the classroom closure is, is an option where we. We have that particular classroom go full remote for the period of time of the quarantine. Now, if we get to the point where. And I'm going to show you some vaccination stats, stats later on in the presentation. Jack mentioned. Countywide stats, but I have some that I'm going to share with you specific to our district to kind of. Show you where we are as, as, as an organization. However, last year, what we were challenged with is if we have to quarantine enough individuals where we can't safely operate. The facility or under consultation with the Department of Health, it becomes a huge public health risk to keep the facility open. Then we would close the building, but not necessarily close the district. And what I mean by that is we would then revert back to. What we learned in the spring, which was remote learning and have our classes held via the internet. So I'm going to jump into. Starting with the specific questions that came in through the emails, a good. Barometer for what, what some of you may have on your mind, and then we'll go to some other questions. Jack, I know you have another commitment, so I greatly appreciate it. I know we have our weekly meeting on Wednesday, and, but thank you for, you know, not only taking the time but representing the. The County Health Department and, and you've been a tremendous partner and my personal gratitude for working with you over the last eighteen months. So thank you.
Yeah, and thanks for having me and anyone out there who is, doesn't get something answered to this evening. Once again, in touch with me, you can call the Health Department and I'd be glad to talk to you.
Great. So as I mentioned earlier, last year we established Chatham United at. Chatham dot K one two dot M Y U S. We keep that email available. All year, so if you do have anything related to COVID, please submit it to that, to that email address. Did, you know, I, I feel bad because, you know, this, this presentation, it kind of came together over the last. Few days. I, I want to also thank, again, our school principals are on the line, our director of. P P S and our director of academics are on the panel. Before I go through some of the questions and answers. Do, do any of you have any comments that you would like to make? And what I will do is also welcome. That while we're going through any of the questions or answers, if you would like to add any commentary or support or. Criticism, please feel free to do so. At this time, does anyone have any, you know, any of the principals would like to say anything?
Yeah, sure. I'll go. No, first, thanks to everybody for being here tonight. You know, when, when we've been talking about moving forward for next year, I know. Majority of us feel we're really excited about, you know, starting the school year, having everyone back. You know, we were fortunate enough in the middle school to bring kids back fourth marking period, which helped us kind of. Observe and see, you know, what was working and what wasn't. For this school year. And last year when we did that, we were six feet apart. Now we can be three feet apart. So we're looking to have as close to normal a, as a school year pre-COVID as possible. I know probably one of the biggest questions I think Justin and I have received is about lockers. Yes, your students will be getting lockers, just not right away. So they are going to get assigned a locker. But we really want to kind of observe and. You know, watch the, you know, where it's, there's heavy congestion to kind of eliminate that. But your, your, your kids have, are getting a locker. So we are, we're, we're very excited about having everyone back.
So I want to, I need to kind of apologize because a few people, actually several people have asked me that. And that is a slight change in our position from, from last week. I had been hopeful that. We were going to be able to support the use of lockers, but I will tell you in the, in the last few days. Jack and others have, have strongly recommended against starting out the school year. So for those of you who I emailed at the end of last week that we were looking at that, we will continue to monitor that. But that came with strong recommendations against. The use early on.
Right, and we're still going to monitor that. You know, we, we want students to be able to use lockers. But we need to come up with, with a plan and I was speaking with Mike earlier. That our focus right now is to get all the kids in. You know, that's our, that's our first priority. We'll monitor situations and, you know, what, be flexible and adjust when it comes to many things, not just lockers.
Thank you. And I know I can see by the, the chat that that's disappointing to quite a few parents and. Know that we'll, we'll continue to revisit that. Perhaps we can provide access on a limited basis. But again, we want to be conservative and keep everybody as safe as possible to start the school year off. So we're going to get to some of those questions. One of the questions was, we, we wonder if the district is collecting information on vaccinated students and staff. Yes, we are. We do, when a student or staff is vaccinated, we have access through the New York State. Immunization website or the staff person voluntarily reports it to us. I am. As you see by some of the numbers here and what Jack mentioned in terms of some of the adults, we are in really good shape in terms of staff. I do want to point out that the number reported for M E D is a number at the end of last school year. We've had several retirements and, and new hires within the recent, the recent few weeks. So we have not had an opportunity to catch up with our newest members of our staff here at M E D, but those, that number. Was reflective of our staff here at M E D at the end of the school year. And as you can see. The middle schools are reporting that a hundred percent of their staff, and when I say staff, it's not just faculty. I'm talking. You know, secretaries, administrators, custodial staff, cafeteria staff. Hundred percent of that building right now is, is vaccinated and very high rates at the high school as well. And then you see, we get a breakdown comparison of grade levels. What I am to tell you is that it's, it's slightly higher than this. In that these are students who have received or are designated as fully vaccinated. Which is two weeks after the administration of the second dose or roughly five weeks from the administration of the first dose. We do have a fairly decent number of students in the couple dozen who are in process. But we did not include in these percentages because they were not quote-unquote fully vaccinated. So you'll see that we're, we're doing fairly well. Obviously. You need to be twelve or up to receive the vaccination. So you're only going to see a very small number of. Six graders who fall in that age category. But as we go up from there and the numbers are, are, are pretty solid. So. I wanted you to, this is the first time that you're seeing this, I wanted you to be able to. Have some context for that. Here, so I'm going to go through some of these, that way we can allow some. Additional time for some of the questions that are coming in live. Will students need to bring Chromebooks home daily? If we're potentially have to be sent home for quarantine exposure, if not, will there be a no-contact way to pick them up? So. We're still working on, on some of this. As you can imagine, it is challenging for some of our younger grade levels to send them. Home and take them back and forth each night. You know, we, we understand that there may be. A situation where we have advanced notice, and we certainly know that we're going to quarantine or close a classroom or a building, that we would make every effort. To avoid any additional work on the behalf of our parents to come and have to come back in and grab something. But should that be the case like we did last year, that is always an option. We've had drive-through pickups for various things, kind of. Contactless pickups for, for materials last year, we could do the same. So I know that's not a perfectly. Definitive answer. I, I guess the answer is we will do the best we can in terms of if that situation. Were, were to arise that we minimize any inconvenience with students not having devices at home. Oh, that was, I'm sorry, I must have. I got copied over, same question. How will lunch be handled? Will students eat in classrooms or lunchroom? And how will distancing be maintained? I'm going to read this, but I know the principals, as late as today, we're working on, on some plans. We anticipate for the most part, students will be eating physically distanced in the lunchroom. There may be circumstances where students may need to eat in a classroom, but this would be an exception to the rule. I know, Mike, it looks like you've unmuted. Do you want to make some comments in terms of the middle school and what we're working on?
Yeah, we're going to, what we're going to do is like last year, if weather permitting, we're going to be outside eating. You know, if, if there's inclement weather, we will be inside in the, in the cafeteria. Especially in sixth and seventh grade. Eighth grade is our largest group. We have ninety-two students. Right now, we can fit them six feet apart in the cafeteria. But that's, that's our plan.
So in the elementary school, we are going to follow a similar plan, which is if we can be outside, we will be outside. However, Mr. Fortran and I worked on a plan today in conjunction with Mrs. Fabiano about. Assigning a seat to all of the students in the cafeteria. And we're going to do some. Work with Kids Club before they leave next week to see how many kids we can fit at a table, et cetera. And to make sure that they're appropriately socially distant. And then we will have assigned seats in the cafeteria, should there be. A chance that we would have to contact trace, then we would not have to quarantine an entire class. We could quarantine. Those students within the required distance from each other. But they will sit in assigned seats in the cafeteria. And we will try to rotate those after every vacation.
So to, to kind of piggyback with what Ms. Reno had suggested, we did receive a communication from. The executive office of the governor over the weekend suggesting that in-person. Instruction is a top priority and that no school should limit students coming back based on physical distancing limitations. So with that said, you know, we, we have opportunities to take a look at places where we might bring students. Closer than six foot together, but the, the, the concern there is that. The contact tracing rules don't necessarily change. So as Kristen alluded to. As our students get closer together, we run the greater risk of having to quarantine a larger number should there be a positive case. So. We, we kind of want to find, if you will, for lack of a better description, a sweet spot where we can manage to kind of get back to as normal as possible. To mitigate risk, but at the same time, you know, not take any unnecessary risk to. Place extra students out on quarantine. This kind of follows the same suit, and these are the questions that I'm listed here, are questions right from the emails. For band, what extra precautions are in place? So just like in the spring, you know, we have some increased distancing. We're taking a look at that, those distances now. All banned and. Participants will continue to wear masks. And of course, on the wind instruments, we do have bell covers. To try to create, to stop the, the air from, from coming out of them. And, and we're looking in terms of choir, we're looking at our options now in terms of whether we. You know, the impact of distance impacts the overall experience and, you know, what are the ramifications of bringing our students closer together? Are there options for masks that are clear or that can be sung through? So we, you know, we're continuing to work on that and, and know that. Our, our top priority is try to make this year's experience for our students as close to normal as possible. Will the district be requiring COVID vaccines for students aged twelve and up, faculty and staff? Now that Pfizer has full F D A approval, just a kind of a side note here, the F D A approval right now for Pfizer is for sixteen-year-olds and up. But also, the answer is the same either way. No, the district does not have the authority to do so, but the governor may. You know, she has suggested as early as her first day that, you know, keeping students in school safely is a number one priority. So right now, we would not be requiring that, but some other legislative body may in, in the future. Last spring, vaccines became available policy was not to test staff or students that were vaccinated due to high risk or false positives. Right now, we only have plans to test athletes, as you heard earlier tonight. We are testing high-risk twice a week and. Low, moderate-risk athletes once a week. And if the county does get, as I've suggested here, that federal grant, then we may look at. Some sort of surveillance testing program, but that is clearly going to be end of this month, early next. Last spring, fully vaccinated staff did not have to quarantine during exposure. You mentioned, I mentioned that earlier when I was speaking to Jack. That is true if you are fully vaccinated and you are symptom-free, you do not have to, do not have to quarantine. This is more for any staff that's on, on, on the call. A question came in, is the state or district going to provide paid? Time off due to having to quarantine, as was the policy last year. If you, you may or may not recall that the federal government had come up with paid sick leave, that expired in December. Of, of twenty. So now we're only covered under the New York State's COVID nineteen paid sick leave. And to, to kind of, the short of the story is that it does go back to January of twenty-one. But if an employee under this, what they call first order of quarantine, they would receive paid leave up to. Ten business days, fourteen calendar days. But after that, a second or a third occurrence. If they were ill from the, the virus, they could use accrued personal sick time. But they would not be eligible for the paid sick leave from New York State at that point. So like always with any situation. We would evaluate these on an individual basis and, and try to minimize any impact on the employee. What is expected of high school teachers if one or more students in our class is quarantined? Should we expect that students will participate in a hybrid schedule? With live streaming, or should they be expected to follow up and get notes from the teacher classmates upon their return? So we, we continue to be in, in discussion with our Chatham Central Schools Teachers Association. However. We, we strongly feel that teacher preference will play a large role in that decision. And it probably varies greatly between subject areas. Some subject areas lend themselves to one scenario versus another. Or lend themselves better to one scenario or another. The objective, though, is the key, right? It's to minimize disruption for the student and maximize their learning. The teacher may provide work, as has been the case in the past when a student is ill, to, to be completed independently. But if that teacher has the capacity and desire to livestream or record a lesson that would benefit the student, we would encourage them to do so. So we'll be working on those details in the coming days and have that flushed out before school starts. What is expected of high school teachers? What is expected of high school teachers, I guess any teacher, if they are quarantined? We would follow, just like last year. If a teacher or a student is ill, they need to recuperate. If you're ill, you're ill. They would not be expected to teach. However, if they are just under a precautionary quarantine for some reason, or they are positive but not symptomatic, and they're able to teach remotely, like we did last year, with the principal, under the principal's authority and discretion, they will decide whether it's appropriate and provide, be able to provide an alternative in terms of in-person instruction. So that again would be something that should be something that might be handled on a case-by-case basis with that particular staff member. What's the difference in policies existed for vaccinated versus unvaccinated faculty? You know, we kind of been mentioning that tonight. One in particular is just the way they would be handled in terms of a contact, a close contact to a positive case. Whereas if they remain asymptomatic, they would not have to quarantine. What metric would trigger a move back to hybrid or fully remote? Kind of mentioned that earlier. That's kind of a difficult question to actually answer. It would be in consultation with the Columbia County Department of Health. You know, if we had fifteen students in a elementary classroom and we contact traced half of them, it might make more sense that the entire classroom go remote so that it is consistent amongst the students. And we'll have to kind of play that by ear depending on the situation. And of course, in terms of the entire school, I mentioned earlier, that would be where we felt that there was a public health or building safety concern because we could not staff the building sufficiently. I had Jack specifically answered this one earlier. You know, we work closely with them, but as soon as the booster shots are available, we will make sure that staff and others know that, aware they're available if they so choose to receive that booster. Will fully vaccinated students and staff need to be tested? I assumed in this question that the person is referring to surveillance testing. It's really undetermined at this point. But one reason is related to vaccinated individuals breaking through the vaccine, and they're able to spread the virus would be one reason why we would test both vaccinated and unvaccinated students. But again, as you've heard throughout the night, right now, we do not have a plan in place to to begin surveillance testing until the grant is received because that's the grant that's going to provide the human resources and the logistical support to kind of pull that off. I, one of my, I think we're going to get to it, but one of the things I wanted to make sure was clear is that we will provide, perform no surveillance testing on students without express written consent of parents. So I didn't want, I think it's, I had that response in another question here, but I wanted to make sure that I didn't negate to say that, that if we go to a program where surveillance testing is required, we would only do so with parent parental consent. In terms of staff, we'll have to see what the governor and others legislate for us to do in terms of whether you're vaccinated or unvaccinated and a requirement to perhaps test in that scenario. This one's a tough one, you know, what plans are being made to each level to identify and mitigate learning loss during COVID due to less than stellar learning environments, reduction of curriculum coverage and expectations, and ease of access to cheating, et cetera. So I don't think there's just any one answer to this question. You know, several strategies will be implemented. It will vary by building and grade level. They include both formal and informal assessments and observations, as was suggested. They may vary greatly, as I just mentioned. We also received federal funding to assist with providing additional opportunities for students to make up ground that they've lost. Our director, Dr. Rude, who's on this call on the panel, will be working closely with the building principals, director of PPS, our teacher leaders and our teachers to put appropriate student supports in place during the school year. Our goal would be to get everybody kind of back on track and leverage that funding so that we can not see any students be unsuccessful with school. One question was what time will the dismissal be at MED for first graders? But I'm using this question as a springboard to let you know that all grades, I should say, within a building will dismiss at the same time to maximize instructional time. So here are the building, these are the times that you're probably familiar with from the past. Our school day at MED will be eight to two-ten, at the middle school, seven-fifty to two-fifteen, at the high school, seven-fifty-four to two-two-thirty-two. We will not have any staggered drop-off or dismissal because that greatly impacted our ability to maximize instructional time with students, which is something that we don't really want to have happen this year. We want to give them the full benefit of our teachers', our teachers' attention. If a vaccinated student is exposed in the same classroom to a student who tests positive, will the vaccinated student have to quarantine? Again, we've said this several times, if it is a vaccinated student and they are symptomatic or not, would determine whether they would have to quarantine. Again, that quarantine period is ten days, and as I mentioned earlier, there is no test out that's being accepted regionally. If a student is asymptomatic, student is quarantined, and they remain asymptomatic and they return within forty hours. And I, you know, I wish I had asked Jack this, but my belief is that there is no waiting period. You're either quarantined or you're not quarantined. And so if you are vaccinated and asymptomatic, you wouldn't be quarantined to begin with, so there would be no waiting period. A few more from the previously asked questions. How often are teachers in schools tested? Again, currently, no Columbia County school will have a testing program in place for staff. You've heard me now several times mention this ELC grant. How often are students COVID tested? Here's where I was looking for the response earlier. Currently, we're only testing athletes. And that remains for further evaluation. And what I mean by that is there is some concern that the Binax rapid test cards may become in short supply. And we may have to modify the frequency for which we test athletes going forward. The other, you know, to put the the full transparency, you've probably read or seen that some of the capital region schools in high, in areas of high transmission in red are requiring their athletes to be fully vaccinated for participation. The Columbia County superintendent's decided that that would not be a prerequisite for participation during fall sports. But we reserve the right, depending on where this variant or other variants go, to potentially entertain that requirement for future seasons. But we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. We have a solid month or so before we need to be concerned over that. So currently, the testing regiment that's in place for student athletes is what we're going to go with. Oh, probably a big one on your mind. Will, and I think I did see, you know, will the administrators, will administration ensure students are providing mask breaks? So the way we interpret, the way the guidance has been interpreted to us is students technically are supposed to wear masks indoors at all times, with the exception of those scenarios that are described. We know that that's probably a little bit less than a practical implementation of that of that guideline. So we are going to provide when a student is when a student is properly physically distanced in a class, certainly when they're eating a snack or they're eating in the cafeteria, this would hold true. But that at the discretion of the teacher can allow students to take us on a very short, brief mask break. Remember, it's not that we don't support the fact that mask breaks can be a good idea. The problem is that changes the whole contact tracing protocol. If I were to be able to show you the document that will be released shortly, it's only in draft form, which I had blurred out, whether the student was wearing a mask and what the distance between students will be very germane to whether that student is quarantined or not. So we want, we understand the need for that, and we will make allowances for that. But we want to be very careful not to kind of undermine what we're trying to do with all the mitigation, multiple mitigation strategies. Will the school please continue to livestream sports for parents and grandparents who are uncomfortable attending sporting events due to high risk? Regardless of high risk or not, that was overwhelmingly well-received. But I want to be honest with you, it's going to depend on the sport. Right now, we do not have the capacity to stream outdoor sports. We don't have the proper internet connection out there, a high-speed internet connection to do that. So sports like soccer and football will not be streamed. The good news is, we, you know, it is much safer to be outdoors right now with COVID than indoors. We do, however, have purchased some new equipment this summer that will allow us to better stream indoor sports from our high school gym. So sports like volleyball, both girls in the fall and boys in the winter, and basketball should be available online like it was last year. And we know that that was extremely well-received, and we're trying to get that equipment installed as soon as possible. So now I'm going to switch over to, I apologize, I'm going to be looking at another computer here as I go through a summary of some of the questions, and it looks like that many of the questions that were posed tonight have been answered in the course of our discussion. With no remote option this year, will students have any educational opportunities during any required quarantine periods? So I think I mentioned a little bit about that. So if a student is quarantined, we're going to leave it up to the discretion of the teacher. At a minimum, that student would be given work to, you know, I mentioned that earlier, would be given work to work on independently and then be able to check in with the teacher via various, you know, email or other methods. However, we are going to leave that up to the discretion of the teacher. If the teacher feels like their court, their particular activity or their coursework is conducive and more advantageous, mutually advantageous for them and the student to stream live or to provide a recording, we're going to encourage that because, again, under the objective of minimizing the disruption but maximizing the instructional benefit, we would hope that that would take place. For those students who are medically compromised parents, could there be an option for remote learning? This one makes my heart ache. You know, we, there are a lot, there are several students in our district that fall into this situation. Unfortunately, we just don't have the capacity to accommodate students based on compromised households. We do, like as I mentioned earlier, have a few students who themselves have provided proper medical documentation and are medically compromised. And we are providing an alternative educational experience for them. It is not, as you probably heard from some of my communications, it is not something we're doing. They are being enrolled, depending on the grade level, in offerings that are coming through our regional quest, our three BOSsies. It is not a Chatham teacher, and in some cases, it's not a synchronous class. We are trying to accommodate those students as best we can, given their serious medical conditions. However, we are unable at this time to do so for students of medically compromised parents or households. So when standard lockers are available, will gym lockers also be available? And will changing for phys ed be allowed or expected? You know, in talking to, I'm going to have to get back to you on that. In talking to our athletic director, there is a, there is a a firm desire to want to be able to give students a few quick minutes in the locker room to change for gym so that they're properly prepared to participate. So again, our concern is with that congregation. So right now, supervision and other factors are going into where we're not able to do that just yet. But hold that thought, and as soon as we get a little further into the school year, we'll update you on where we are with that. Oh, sports. Will parents be allowed to attend games in person? Would like to know for both indoor and outdoor sports. Thank you for bringing that up. That would have been something I should have had a bolted item. So for change, I'm able to kind of maybe bring you some good news. So we are not going to limit spectators outside to any extent. We do ask that, you know, you use your independent judgment and perhaps keep some separation in the stands from other families. But we are not going to, there is no required outdoor use of masks, nor will we limit spectators for outdoor sports in any way, shape, or form. Indoor sports, here is what we're going to do. There, and this varies in the, in the region. As you know, we play students, we play schools outside of our own region. We play students, we play students or schools within our conference. So you will be subjected to the rules that are in place of the venue that is hosting the game. But here in Chatham, what we're going to try is we feel that we have enough capacity in our gym for volleyball and basketball that we will not, at this juncture, unless, you know, COVID changes, we're not going to restrict spectators. But we are going to require that if you are indoors, so you will be wearing masks and that you, as a family, socially distance from other attendees, other spectators at the event. So hopefully, that's a little bit different than the restriction last year. We'll see how that goes, but that's how we're going to start off the year. And several school districts are going to do the same, although I think some are limiting spectators to two or four. We're going to see how that works in terms of our capacity. Do I have any others? No. Okay, so we're kind of at the hour. Just looking through. I appreciate, I want to thank you each and every one of you for your contribution to a successful start of next school year. I don't envy any of you, and yeah, appreciate all your efforts and headaches moving forward. One thing that just came to mind while I was reading that, last year, we tried to be extraordinarily transparent. It may have been even maybe a bit annoying. You received a tremendous number of emails to me. Sometimes they just said, we want you to be aware that there's a positive case in the high school and that contact tracing is or is not required. If you haven't heard from us, you're okay. I think we're going to start out this year with the same transparency. I think it makes people feel comfortable, both our staff and our parents, to know that we're being forthright with you and that we are sharing whatever information that we have. So please know that, I apologize in advance for the large number of communications. I so hope that we get back to a point where I can send you better information about the district and not just always things about COVID. I did see that, it said, will there, will in terms of the co-principal, which isn't COVID-related, we are going to be releasing a very detailed plan in terms of, we don't want parents to be confused on who you should contact when you have an issue. We'll be working on that this weekend, certainly before school starts. We will be sharing a graphic and some additional information with parents in those buildings so that there's no confusion who you should contact in case you have any issues. So that kind of concludes our session for this evening. Please know that, again, I am one of the people that personally monitors that Chatham United. We are, we feel our parents are partners in our student's success and our student's safety. And we look to provide you the best possible solutions to these very challenging problems. So with that, please be safe, and we'll look forward to, for those staff that are on the call. Look forward to welcoming you back on Tuesday. Doors open at eight, our welcoming address starts at eight-thirty. And for you parents, I can't wait to see you in the fall, dropping off your children or at one of our upcoming events. As I, and I always, I lied to you, I said it was done. But we are working on information about open house and parent conferences and all those kinds of things that you're probably curious about. But give us a little time and we'll make sure that you have more than enough information. Just one more question's coming about. I'm not sure. Don't quite understand the question, but anyway, please feel free to reach out to us, our principals who are on the call, thank you very much. The director of PPS, our director of academics, Dr. Rude, and of course, K. Gerard, who's feeding me all the questions from the back. The entire team has worked tirelessly again this summer to kind of open school in a very positive way, and my gratitude to you. But my gratitude also to our custodians, our secretaries, our transportation department, our IT department, our cafeteria staff, everyone behind the scenes who wants to make this a successful year. And if I've forgotten anybody, I didn't mean to. This brain's getting a little old and it's late at night. So folks, have a great evening, and we'll talk to you soon.